Sarah.
Okay, start again. Sorry, I had to hit the record button.
Okay. All right, everyone. Thanks for your patience. This is Leah Rach and I'm Chair of the Kenny Bunk ZBA. And I have with me in this room Stephen Sayers, who is the Vice Chair and Secretary. And I also have member Wayne Berry. So we are participating via, I guess you can see me video wise. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you think that's creating? We have a second phone in here. You think that's creating some of the problem?
We can, we can hear you. It's just your movement is delayed.
I'm not sure what you mean by my movement is delayed.
On the phone, the picture. So if you, if you shut your video off on the phone and just did microphone, that probably worked the best. Oh, there we go.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay, great. So shall I, did you hear what I had said previously?
Yes, that you were in the room with two other board members and you were participating remotely.
Yes. Okay, so this is going to be a bit challenging, but you know, we shall overcome and we'll work through it. I'm, I'm just going to kick off if I could just by talking about the agenda. And Brittany, everything is still working. All right. I'm coming through. Okay?
Yes.
And other, I can't see folks. So if they could just, actually I can see folks. Can everybody just kind of give a thumbs up, particularly the applicant, to let me know that they can hear? And there's not a terrible delay here?
Everything is good.
Okay, great. So I am trying here just for purposes of seeing who we have attendance.
You're on mute.
Okay, here I am back. I also see, so we have three board members at the town hall. Rach and Berry and Sarah. Sarah, Sarah, Sayers. I see also on the screen that we have, is that correct? Do I have any other members present?
You said John Cibigni and Paul Brunel, correct?
So that's the five people on the board who are present in this meeting, correct?
Correct.
And my understanding is that Mr. Brunel is an alternate, but because we only have four regular members, that he be basically ascend to being a regular member for the purposes of this meeting. And so I am going to move that that be the case. I'd like to have the approval of all the other board members as well, or the regular board members, please. Because this is a hybrid meeting, I'm going to do a roll call. So Mr. Berry, how do you vote?
I, I am, I am here.
And can you hear, can you hear Wayne?
I can hear him. Did he say, I, all I heard him say was, I am here. Did he say yes?
Yes, he voted aye in the affirmative.
Okay.
And Sayers?
Yes.
Mr. Brunel, I'm going to not have Brunel vote. Mr. Seventy.
Aye.
And the Chair also votes aye. So Mr. Brunel, you'll be a full voting member this evening? And?
Thank you.
Thank you. So on the agenda this evening, as, as the agenda shows, we have a continued application that we carried over from our last meeting because the applicant was not able to attend. And what we are considering this evening is the use variance. It's requested to construct a wastewater disposal system in the Branch Brook A zone. The applicant is Guy Arring and the address of the property at issue here is on Maguire Road, behind 664 Weber Hill Road and 740 Maguire Road. And the use variance is to construct a wastewater disposal system, as I said. This, as I said, is a matter that's continued over from our last meeting. There were a few outstanding housekeeping issues that we asked the applicant to address, and I will ask the applicant to address those during his presentation. Once we get there, if, if he hasn't already. What I do want to do, just as a housekeeping matter, is to ask my fellow board members whether they have any conflicts or possible conflicts of interest that they want to disclose at this time. Is there, I, I actually have one myself, but I want to make sure that everyone else gets an opportunity to speak. Anybody, any board members have any possible conflicts or perception of conflict that they want to divulge at this time?
Sarah says no.
None for Wayne Berry.
Okay, how about the other two members who are on Zoom? Mr. Seventy?
He's muted.
But are you able to hear?
Yep, he's muted. He just needs to unmute himself.
No.
Okay, and how about Mr. Brunel?
Neither do I.
Okay.
Leah, Wayne broke up a little bit. He said no. Can he just?
He said no.
Okay, perfect, okay, perfect.
For my part, I need to disclose that as I was going through this application, I saw the applicant's name and I thought, huh, that sounds familiar. Why is that familiar? And I realized many years ago, probably 15 years ago, I actually rented a property from Mr. Arring. I was, I was a residential tenant in one of his homes and had nothing to do with this particular property. And I think I may have met Mr. Arring once or twice over the term of my tenancy. Myself, I don't believe this makes me in any way unable to give a fair and impartial assessment of this application. But I wanted to disclose that just to make sure that, A, my fellow board members believe that to be the case, but also, of course, the applicant or anybody out in the public who may be participating. So I wanted to put that out there and let anybody who wants to comment on that do so.
Let me just make a motion. I move that the disclosure just made by Ms. Rachin does not constitute a conflict of interest sufficient to disqualify her from participating in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers. And, and I would ask if the applicant has anything to say either way that they do so?
I have, I have no preference. It's fine with me. No objection.
Okay, so I have a motion duly made. I don't think it was seconded. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got motion made and seconded. So again, I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Berry?
Aye, agree.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Seventy? He's muted.
Yeah, he's muted. There we go.
And Mr. Brunel, please.
Yes.
And of course, I will, I am not, I'm going to abstain from that vote, but it looks like we have a, the motion carries. So without further ado, I think we'll move on. I just wanted to also talk about very quickly just how these matters proceed. Again, we, I think for the record, it's clear who the members are and the voting members are this evening. We do have a quorum. A quorum is three. We have five voting members at this point, so that is satisfied. The way these matters proceed is that the applicant proceeds first. The applicant will, will present his or her case, or in this case, his case, and has the right to do so uninterrupted. If he doesn't object, then I think sometimes it's more efficient to, for, for board members to ask questions as they arise. So I would ask Mr. Arring at this point, do you have an objection if we ask you questions as they arise? Would you prefer to just go through your presentation uninterrupted?
I have no objection at all.
Great, thank you. So then after the applicant makes his presentation, I believe the code is, and I'm sorry, is the code officer here? I think?
Yes.
Yes, great. Thanks, thanks Frank. So code enforcement officer can provide any information that he feels would be helpful to our understanding of this application. And then after that, any member of the public who wishes to weigh in can do so. We will also consider any evidence that was submitted from outside parties. At this point, I believe there's a letter from the Kenny Bunk, Kenny Bunk Port Wells Water District regarding this matter that we'll consider. After we do that, then due process dictates that the applicant has every right to respond to anything that has arisen after his presentation and to address it. After that, I will close the public portion of the hearing and the board will then deliberate on the, on the issues that were required to consider and make a decision. So with that, I just wanted to ask if anybody has any questions about process before we get into the nuts and bolts of, of the matter. Okay, hearing none. I'm going to proceed. And Brittany, could you please do me a favor and let me know? I'm looking on the phone and I, it doesn't appear that there are any members of the public. I do see two phone numbers, but those actually may be, one is Wayne.
There, there are two phone numbers. One is Wayne's. I'm not sure who's the other. It might be an attendee. So when we get to that point, I'll ask them to try to raise their hand or unmute.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to open the consideration of this use variance application. One thing, I thought we had gone through this during our last meeting, but the minutes, I don't think reflect it, so I could be mistaken. I just want to take care of some threshold issues that we deal with in any case. First is right title and interest. The applicant, whether the applicant has sufficient standing in right title and interest in the property to bring the application. I think we considered last time that the deeds that were presented, and I believe Mr. Kunkle had said that the deeds presented established right title and interest. I'm inclined to, to agree with that. I just want to make sure my fellow board members also feel that way. I don't believe that it's required to have a, a vote, but if anybody on the board has a concern about right title and interest, I would ask that they raise that now. My fellow board members here, I see that they're, they're silent, so there seems to be no issue on right title and interest. Mr. Brunel, Mr. Seventy, any concerns in that regard?
No concerns for me.
Okay, and also another threshold issue that we need to establish or discuss is jurisdiction. And from my perspective, the record is fairly clear that we do have jurisdiction to entertain a use variance under, and I'm just going to cite the sections of the zoning ordinance that allow that for the record and for the findings. Under Article 5, Sub 6, Sub C, and Article 8, Sub 2, Sub F, Sub 2, Sub C, allows the Board of Appeals to consider use variances for single-family dwellings and septic systems in the Branch Brook A zone, as well as Article 6, Sub 2, Sub B, allows us to entertain general variances. And so it's those provisions that I believe establish our jurisdiction to hear this matter. Again, I would just open this up to my fellow board members to say if they have any concerns in this regard. Looking at my fellow board members across the table, and I don't see concerns raised by them. Oh, I think Mr. Sayers does have a concern. Hold on.
The sec, yeah, the section under which Mr. Arring is now proceeding is very specific in terms of variances. It, it's very specific as to the allocation of the burden of proof, what the nature of the proof has to be, and the source from which that proof has to come. And it's the applicant's burden to establish all three of those things. And specifically, Article 8, Section 2, F2C of the zoning ordinance says that any single lot of record existing legally as of December the 16th, 1986, and lying totally within Zone A, may have a single-family dwelling and one wastewater disposal system. And it's the obligation of the applicant to get a use variance from the ZBA. But it also says the applicant must produce proof from the registry of deeds that the lot existed prior to December the 16th, 1986. And I hate to be hypothetical, but this is a question of jurisdiction. And the lot at issue, it doesn't seem to be the lot that is referred to in the quick claim deed attached to the application. If you take a look at the quick claim deed that is attached to the application, it refers to a completely square lot, which is 30 rods in length on one side and 43 rods in length on the other side. And that equates out to the rate of 16.5 feet per rod, to a square with the short side being 495 feet and the long side being 709.5 feet. When you take a look at the overhead photograph that's attached, or there are various versions of it, but the nearest one is the penultimate page of the application. If you look at the north side of this trapezoidal lot, it's not a square lot. The, the length of that side is 489.69 feet, not 495 feet. The east side is 777.84 feet, not 709.5 feet. The south side is 495 feet, which seems to be accurate. And the west side is 732 feet, 732.39 feet, not 709.5 feet. So there's a, there's a lack of congruity, if you like, between the, the lot that is depicted on the overhead photograph and the lot referred to in the quick claim deed attached to the, the application. And since it's the obligation of the applicant to come forward with proof from the land records, the lot at issue is the, existed as of the date specified, which was December the 16th, 1986. I don't see that the applicant has actually done that here. And that is a question of jurisdiction. And unless the applicant can prove that, or show us using the land records evidence that that deed is the deed at issue, or that that lot is a lot at issue, then I don't see how we can go forward on this. But I open, I, I yield to my fellow members on that particular point.
So does, do any other members have a concern or, or something to add in that regard? I have some thoughts, but I'd also love to hear from the applicant. Mr. Berry, do you want to speak to that or?
I'll wait till I hear from the applicant.
So one, one thing I did notice is that this was an issue I believe that Mr. Sayers had raised at our last meeting. And that was a house. Yeah, and it was a housekeeping issue that I know, I believe Mr. Kunkle had asked Mr. Arring to address. And I did see subsequent submissions that there were additional deeds and a plan by lots shown, what's it called, showing lots of forest making in Kenny Bunk that was recorded in 1971 in the registry of deeds. And I think the deeds referenced Lot 5 and 7 on that plan. I did not go into the level of detail of calculating feet and meets and bounds and such. But I think it's important to hear from the applicant on this point, and then we can ask additional questions if we think that's necessary. So Mr. Arring, would you, would you care to address the concerns raised by board member Sayers?
Well, sure. At the time, months ago, I had, I had sorted through most of that. I didn't check the, I didn't have a surveyor go in and, and check them. But yeah, I, I thought I had addressed all of that in my application. And when I went through it, it seemed to make a lot of sense to me. So now I'm a, I'm just a little bit confused with regard to the, the question. I would have to go back, going through multiple deeds and back, go back to the plan that I did have drawn up by a, by a surveyor from another state as a, as a favor to me. I, I don't have an answer to that question.
Mr. Arring, let me, let me just clarify something. You had said you had asked a surveyor to draw up a, a plan. I'm not sure if I've seen that, or is, is that something that you submitted? Or is that something that you, is in process?
It was submitted with my application.
Okay, I'm looking at the application and I'm just going through here. Are you talking about, was it from Longview Partners by chance? Is that what you're referencing?
No, actually, it's from Cardigan Mountain Land Surveyors LLC.
Is he that?
Nope.
And it's a, a plan with four locks, four of my locks.
We are all flipping furiously through the materials that we have, and we have not, we do not see that. I don't trust myself entirely, but I do trust my board members, and, and they are similarly lacking in that paperwork. I don't know, can the code officer speak to that? Or Brittany, I'm not sure at this point who is receiving paperwork for the ZBA. Can either two of you shed any light on whether or not that was actually received and just didn't get in our hands? Or you don't have it?
I can speak to that. The quick claim deed is on the actual original application. The supplemental information in the agenda that Brittany had sent to all of you has the remaining deeds that Guy had supplemented, added supplemental information along with the surveys.
Yeah, when you say, this is what I'm concerned about. I have this plan, a 1971 plan, recorded in the registry and a number of deeds. But I don't see, and I printed off that supplemental material that was linked from the agenda today.
Okay.
And I'm not.
The survey plan that you have in your application was a survey plan from the subdivision off of Maguire, yeah, off of the main road there, Weber Hill Road. I never received a survey that Guy is talking about with the original application. The only survey I have was that what was submitted in the supplemental information. I had the original application in, that I scanned in, and that was not in there. So I'm not sure if he meant the application that came in under the other applicant. The only thing that I can speak to in that deed is that it says more or less, 30 rods more or less, or 40 rods more or less. So it's not a, it's, I mean, I've seen some deeds that are 30 rods more or less, and it's a lot more, and sometimes it's just a little bit.
And Brittany, thank you for that clarification. I will tell you my thoughts. Of course, I'm one member and everybody has, you know, this is a live issue. It's a threshold issue. And, and I'll just share what my thoughts are and others can weigh in. I absolutely 100% agree with my fellow board member that it's a threshold jurisdictional issue that before we can even consider the merits, that we need to have evidence that this lot is owned, and it was a lot of records prior to 1986. I feel that, that threshold has been met in the sense that we have deeds that granted, the deeds themselves are not prior to 1986, but they reference lots on a plan, lots 5 and 7 on this plan that was recorded in 1971. So from my perspective, you know, because I don't think it is this board's job necessarily to parse meets and bounds and, 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 you know, precise measurements, I would feel comfortable saying that he's met the requirement of showing that the property at issue is a lot of record prior to 1986. I say that with the full understanding that my fellow board members may disagree, but I'll put it out to discussion now.
If there was a survey that has been prepared, that could probably clear up the issue. I think we should see that survey.
Here's the survey. And I'm confident that was included in the application or with the application.
Guy, can you email that to me and then I can share it on the screen?
I sure hope so. It should be at my fingertips here. Bear with me a second. And who am I going to send this to?
Uh, B, yeah, BHoward@kennybunkmain.us. I think you have my email.
B Howard, B Howard, Brittany. Let me find you.
Did I pop up?
Well, not yet, but let me find you in my inbox. Can I send it to anybody else? James?
If you just, if you just send it to me, I can pop it up on the screen and everybody will be able to see it.
Okay, I have B, as in Brittany Howard, H-O-W-A-R-D.
At Kenny Bunk. Maine is all spelled out, as in the state, dot U S. I always want to say dot com, and that's never the right answer.
Okay, let me just attach this. There are sketches. And it's off. 35 meg. So it'll just take a minute.
Thank you.
And my apologies if that was not attached to the application. I'm, I'm confident it was. And also my apologies to the board for being at 30,000 feet the last, or last meeting. My apologies. Okay, it's gone.
I have this one.
Yeah, okay. I, I think the confusion here is that it may have been attached to the original application by the gentleman who was not you, but not this one. That's where I think the, the confusion arose, Mr. Arring.
Could have been, but.
But we're gonna, we're gonna look at it now.
Good, good.
Thank you. So we're just taking an opportunity to have a look. And I would invite my fellow board members that, once they have looked at that, that they weigh in on whether there are concerns around it being a lot of record from 1986, that they address that.
And Brittany, I just sent you a smaller, a smaller image of it.
Is this the same?
No, that's not the same.
So this is what was submitted with the original application, because the email hasn't come through yet?
Okay, I, I just sent the email again with a, I think what I have is a, a smaller file, I hope.
So this is not the same one that?
No, this, this is not the one.
Okay.
Let me look into my original.
But, but yeah, I can put a finer point on it, just to expedite things. The requirement under the ordinance says that the applicant must produce proof from the registry of deeds. So whether or not you have this survey, I don't think is particularly relevant to the inquiry. I think it's what is recorded in the registry. And again, I'll just reiterate my position that, you know, my understanding of the case law is that our job as, as sort of lay municipal volunteers is not to parse in any great detail the deeds themselves and courses and, and square footed, that sort of thing. It's really to get a, a threshold understanding of whether the person coming before us has the, the right to be before us as they own the lot. And I am satisfied with respect to the deeds presented, that they represent, that they reference lots 5 and 7 on a plan that was recorded in 1971, that being prior to 1986. That, that from my perspective, and again, I understand I'm only one, that that passes muster for standing, the threshold issue is standing. I know Mr. Sayers is here and he will weigh in.
Okay, I think lots 5 and 7 refer to a completely different property. The property at issue here, looking at the plant, this is the most recent plan that was provided by Mr. Arring. It's a sort of a triangular.
Sure, and that's the one that's recorded, just for the record, in 1971, correct?
Right, but the property at issue is to the south of, of that, and that also. Right, but the property at issue is to the south of, of, and that also bears on the right of way issues that Mr. Barry raised earlier in the, in the prior hearing. So the concern that I've had, I mean, it looks like this is a, a brand new lot. It's, uh, it's a, it's a different lot from the one that's referred to in the, in the deed. It's a little larger than the one referred to in the deed. And that's a matter of concern because you have to prove that, you know, that the lot that's the subject of the application is the lot that's referred to in the deed that is recorded. And I, I just don't see that.
Understood. Okay, so that.
May I extract something, please?
Yes, go ahead.
You're correct. Five and seven, lots five and seven are from a, from a different set of parcels. That, that's correct. I called the sketch of erring lots up here and the question, the parcel and question that we're talking about is in fact the thirty rods by forty-three rods. Doesn't look like that on, on the Kenny bunk tax map because there's a lot of rough edges, but that's the one we're talking about. The thirty rod by forty-three rod or four hundred ninety-five feet by seven hundred nine feet. Pretty much a trapezoid.
Okay, so I stand corrected. I had, I was thinking that it was within that plan of 1971. So if it is not within that plan, then how do you establish that this lot that we are speaking about now? And I can, um, just from my understanding of, of tax maps and what appears on tax maps is not necessarily exactly what will appear on deeds. So I, that I understand. But how do you state that this you are speaking of that is not showing on the 1971 plan? That that was in fact, a lot of record prior to 1986?
Well, I downloaded all those, uh, all those deeds and I have them all on, on record here. I would need to sort back through them, but, but yeah, they're all from, from, you know, before eighty-six. I can tell you that.
Okay, so Leah, would you like me to share my screen with the supplemental information that he submitted? And he highlighted on the side where it carried over in the older deeds. Would that maybe be helpful?
I have that in front of me.
I would like to see it though. That would be great.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, now that I said that I can do it, I have to be able to do it. Hold on. I think I closed that tab out.
Yeah. I personally, I can't find that information in an email or anything, so.
You know where it is? You can link off of it off the agenda. If you go to the agenda, it'll say supplement materials or something like that, Brittany, right?
Yeah. So can everybody see this?
I cannot very well, but I have the printout.
You, okay, so this is the supplemental information that I submitted that had Frank's email with Guy back and forth. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, so if you scroll down through the first two pages of the email, the following page is the original deed that he submitted to the board with the book and page at the top of seventeen eight three six, page eight ninety.
That's correct.
Which I believe what is what assessing has as the book and page for the deed of that lot of record on the G I S page and in our vision program. So the assessing department is representing that this deed represents that parallelogram that was shown. So if you scroll down here, here's this lot seven that they're speaking about in the plan that was submitted that shows the right of way out to this kind of area. Um, and then this right here is the highlighted three rods. That's confusing on if it actually is, but it does say the more or less in here. Then he also submitted an older deed from with book two oh nine eight, page seven nine five. And if you scroll through this, it's highlighted in here. Right here, this is the same deed description on page book. Sorry, huh? They move it on me. Two ninety-eight, page seven ninety-six. There's a highlighted section almost towards the end of the page that has the same description in that original deed that he submitted. Which has a date paid date of seventy-five on it, nineteen seventy-five.
Yep, we see that. Thank you.
And then, then there's the third deed, which is what I, I think, and maybe Guy might be able to clarify. This was a larger piece of property before it was split into the piece that he owns.
Correct, that's unrelated. Yeah. And I have for the, um, the one lot being same premises conveyed to Melvin A. Jones per warranty deed of force making dated July nine nineteen seventy-four and recorded a book, uh, twenty fifty-six, page seven fifty-nine. So yeah, it's, it's all pretty old.
The plan that he submitted, he currently, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Guy, you own lot seven? That's shown on this plan?
I own, well, let me go to that triangular.
Which is the deed, which in that earlier deed is described at the top of the paragraph.
Lot seven, that's correct.
Yeah. And if I, you probably can't see my cursor. He owns lot seven and then sort of diagonally down from lot seven is where this lot is that he's speaking about.
So with that, Mr. Sare, how do you, how do you feel about with that highlighted language with respect to deeds referenced back to seventy-four?
With all due respect, um, I'm looking at this language and it refers to measurements, um, that are taken. Um, the first one says thirty rods, more or less to a stone post. So that formula appears in there with respect to the thirty rods. And then it says thence turning at right angles and running in a northwesterly direction, forty-three rods to a stone post. It doesn't say more or less. So this isn't a parallelogram at all. This is a square. Because you've got right angles in there. So it's a square piece of property. That's the lot that's referred to in this particular deed. And here in the application, we've got a trapezoidal piece of property that, um, doesn't have right angles, um, in it anywhere. And the measurements that are referred to in, as being the dimensions of that lot are different from the ones specified in the deed.
I'm looking for the dimensions on this. I don't see any dimensions on this one.
Just, it's just scale.
If I could, you put the overhead photograph together with this, this thing, and that's what you get.
Mr. Barry, please weigh in if you could.
If I could shed a little additional light on this, I know the parties who previously owned the property, the Jones family. It's not surprising to me that the deed description doesn't match up with today's drawings. I refer to the, the plan that was submitted in the January eighteenth submission. And if I could ask Mr. Arring in the bottom left of corner, says drawn by S C S, not a survey.
I'm sorry, um, S C S, not a survey.
Bottom right, bottom left corner.
Yeah, it's a disclaimer note on your site.
Yes.
So go ahead.
And what's your question?
Can you identify the, the people who drew the plan?
Yes, I can. Um, that's Scott C. Sanborn. Uh, it's the father of Eric Sanborn, who, who submitted a, a previous application. And Scott, Mr. Sanborn is the owner, is the principal in, uh, Cardigan Mountain Land Surveyors from, uh, uh, New Hampshire. And he was kind enough to come out and, and, and survey their property and give us, uh, you know, a really very good insight. I'm sure it's a very professional insight. He's just not licensed in the state of Maine, so he wanted to have a disclaimer. And I don't want to cast any aspersions with Mr. Jones because he, he was a dear friend of mine. But yeah, I think oftentimes they, they did these things over a few beers around a kitchen table.
More than a few beers. I'm, I am familiar with Mr. Jones' history. Uh, I'm not surprised at what I see. I understand that, that there are three parcels that Mr. Arring acquired through a foreclosure action. Is that correct, Mr. Arring?
That's correct.
And this is one of those parcels?
This is one of those parcels. That's correct.
I don't have a problem with the discrepancy on it, uh, particularly with the, with the size and the, and the bearings on this. Somewhat familiar with the properties. And I really, I believe this is, I believe this is an existing property and that existed prior to the enactment of the ordinance.
Good to hear.
Proceeding.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so we've heard from the three of us in, in the town hall. How about, um, if I could open this up to Mr. Seventy and Mr. Brunel, if they'd like to weigh in on, um, whether you believe that the threshold issue of whether the applicant has established that he in fact owns this property that he's applying for, if you could weigh in on that, I'd appreciate it.
I guess I'll weigh in and I'm very confused. It just seems like there's a lot of conflicting information. It would be nice if there was a deed and a survey of that deed, but, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if I can say he's proven it or not.
So, okay, so I think then, um, Mr. Seven, and, and it's, you know, I, I think you've heard. Actually, let me ask Mr. Sares, having heard everything that you've heard, are you still feeling that, um, the burden, the applicant has not carried his burden?
Yes.
Okay. So I think I heard Mr. Barry say that, that it's, it's good enough. Basically has passed the, the threshold of RTI, right title and interest. I feel that it has, um, passed that burden as well under sort of the, the main law as I understand it. So I think, Mr. Brunel, you're the one that we need to hear from at this point.
I understand the arguments. I think that it meets the threshold. I, I will admit that I did not receive a physical copy I can find of these supplemental materials. So I've been reviewing them a little bit, but I, I'm getting past that. But, uh, yeah, to answer your question, I'm satisfied that it meets that test.
Okay, so I, I'm just going to do a formal roll call because I think this is an important issue that we should vote on. So it, it, go ahead, Mr. Barrett. We've got.
We need four to approve the.
No, three. Four is for the Historic Preservation Commission. That's, that's what you're thinking about. So, um, I'm going to call, actually, I don't know if we had a motion. I will move that the applicant has demonstrated sufficient right title and interest in the property to proceed to the merits of the application.
Second.
So we have a mo- motion made and seconded. I'm going to call the roll. Uh, Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Sares?
No.
Mr. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Seventy?
I'll say yes.
And the chair also votes yes. So that motion carries. And at this point, I think we can get into the merits of the application. Um, you, Mr. Arring, I, I'm assuming you're appearing on your own behalf this evening. You will be making your own presentation.
I wasn't planning on it, but, um, Longview Partners, they, they presented, uh, the justification for the variance request, which was submitted with my application.
Okay.
And in order for that property to be of any value to me, I, I just, you know, I need to be able to put a house on it.
Understood. And so let me just be clear. When it comes to these, uh, variance applications, the, the test under the ordinance is very clearly prescribed. And those are the things that we will need to vote on and consider deliberate and vote on. And the way that, um, we traditionally do this is that if it's a variance criteria and you know, of course, the undue hardship test, that is what the written submissions had addressed. It's those four criteria that have to be, each of which has to be established in order for us to, um, approve the application. So, um, you know, by all means, it's your prerogative if you want to rest on, and I'm looking at specifically the quote justification for variance request that was presented by Longview Partners. If you want to rest on that, by all means, that's your prerogative. If you want to go through in a little bit more detail, why you believe, or even if just you want to, you know, highlight what Longview Partners had said with respect to each of those four prongs of the test. Welcome to, so. And if not, we can just enter into our own deliberations and ask questions that we have. But I think it's, you know, it's really important that each of those prongs are addressed because we have to vote individually on each of those criteria.
Right, well, let's, let's rest on Longview Partners', uh, point of view. Um, I expressed, you know, my concerns to, to them at the time. And I'm more than happy to field any, any questions that the board might have.
Okay.
I'm new at this.
No, I understand. I understand. And so one thing I would ask, you know, traditionally what we do is then turn it over to the code officer. If, if he thinks that, that he's got any relevant information to share that is germane to this application. Uh, we'd love to hear from you if you have anything you'd like to say.
I have nothing specifically addressed at this time. Obviously, we'll do the application, heard this application a few times at different meetings. I think Mr. Arring has satisfied pretty much what we're looking for, but obviously you guys have enough to take the determination.
When, when you say he's satisfied what we looking, we are looking for, are you saying specifically with the, like the actual submission criteria of what he had to submit or on the, the actual substance of those four four prongs in the test? I just want to be clear what, what you're saying.
Uh, basically, I feel like he, uh, needs more prongs in the test, in my opinion.
I got you. Okay. And the only, and, and of course, we're going to open this up to the public. I think Brittany, you mentioned that there may be one member of the public out there who would like to possibly address this issue. So I'd open discussion up to members of the public, if anybody's out there who wants to weigh in on the merits of this application.
If you could, uh, raise your hand or star nine is what you need to hit to raise your hand. If you'd like to participate.
Brittany, just to clarify, the person out there is on a cell phone, right? They're not on video.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So I'm hearing nothing. So I think what I'll do is just simply.
I, I have a raised hand.
Oh, great. If the person raised their hand, if they can identify themselves through the record, that would be great. And please, whoever's out there, have your, have your day in court.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hi, this is, I just let you guys know, this is Eric Sanborn. I'm the original applicant and I have a pending sale that's pending all of this, uh, on this property. Uh, so I'm just listening in to see how everything goes now that it, the application is in, uh, Mr. Arring's hands in his name.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Do you have?
So I'm, I'm, I have absolutely no concerns and I'll just, uh, keep, uh, listening to everything that you guys decide.
Okay, thank you for identifying yourself. And, and nothing to add on the substance of, of the criteria here that we're looking at?
Uh, you're more than welcome to ask me. Um, I did do quite a fair amount of the original deed research last year. And it's, uh, my father as well, who's the licensed New Hampshire land surveyor and owner of Cardigan Mountain Land Surveyors, who was kind enough to come out and, uh, do a, basically a GPS sketch for us. So that's, uh, that was all done with a GPS instrument. He's just not a main licensed surveyor. So if I ever need anything from an actual surveyor, I'll have to contract it to somebody here who's licensed in Maine.
Sure, okay. All right, the only information of which I'm aware that was submitted by members of the public are, um, was a letter from the Kenny bunk, Kenny bunk port and Wells Water, Water District. And they, you know, just to summarize the letters in the record, but the concern I believe that was raised with, with, was, of course, this is in the Branch Brook Aquifer Protection District and the purpose of which is to protect groundwater. They raised a concern about the location of the disposal field and also suggested a, a alternate location. So from my perspective, and again, I want to hear from my fellow board members. We welcome this into the record. We, we take it into consideration. But as far as our job, I don't believe it weighs into the actual criteria that. actual criteria that we are in, are charged to look at with respect to the four prongs of the undue hardship test. I think it's certainly relevant when, you know, assuming that, and I'm not saying this will happen, but assuming for the sake of argument that the variance is granted, I think this letter is important when whoever is, you know, the LPI, the the person who is granting a permit for the for the the subsurface wastewater system would certainly want to consider that, but I don't think it's actually part of our charge when we're just simply tasked with considering these four undue hardship criteria. So I'm putting that out to my fellow board members to see if they're, if they have any thoughts on on that.
May I mention one thing?
Please.
Okay, we did, I did review that that letter, and I did have a new septic design, you know, per their suggestion, which is, you know, up on the hill, much further away, so I think we also addressed that. I'm confident we addressed that issue.
Okay, so I'm hearing you say, Mr. Arring, on the record that you have redesigned the system consistent with the recommendations of the Water District?
Correct.
Or that you're representing that that it will be consistent?
The, I'm representing that the plan has been revised, yes.
For that clarification. And Brittany and Frank? Consistent with what the rec?
Water District.
Yes, Mr. Arring, just to clarify, we want to make sure the record is clear, that you have designed the the system and relocated it in an area consistent with the recommendations of the Water District in their January eighteenth letter.
That's correct. And that was, the revised plan was submitted with the application.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Berry? Has a comment?
I have two disclosures tonight. One, the sec, the second is, is that I use Longview Partners as biologists and soil design scientists. So I'm not sure that the ZBA has purview over, I believe, as you stated earlier, that it falls to the LPI to make a determination of whether the location is a proper or not. Maybe based on the letter from KKW, maybe not. I think our job tonight is to look through the four criteria of hardship, make that decision, and and move it on to the next level. However, if the board objects to my participating, I'm more than happy to recuse myself from any votes regarding Longview Partners or KKW.
So, Mr. Berry, thank you for that disclosure. I'll tell you from my perspective, I do not believe that that requires recusal in any event because we are limited in our decision to those four criteria. However, if any of my fellow board members feel differently, or particularly the applicant has any concern, I'd like to hear from from folks on that point.
Leah, for the record, I only heard his second concern, which is that he uses Longview Partners for his personal property and personal work as their, as a soil scientist and wetland delineator. The first issue I missed, but I'm assuming it's because he was a board member or was on the KKW.
I'll clarify that his wife is a current employee with the Water District.
Okay, thank you.
So based on those disclosures by Mr. Berry, does anyone have a concern, including the applicant, that he should not be weighing in or voting on this application?
As the applicant, I have no concern, and as we apply for a building permit, if we all decide, or if it's decided that we need to once again modify the septic, you know, our water supply is more important than, you know, than somebody's residence, so we'll do whatever we need to do to take care of it.
And thank you, Mr. Arring, and do any of the board members have a concern with Mr. Berry's continued participation in this matter? Hearing none, I think we should proceed to the substance of this appeal, okay? So what I can do right now, it's sort of super formal, but I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this of this hearing so that we can conduct our deliberations. That is, I should say that we are always allowed to reopen that and ask the applicant any questions that we want, but at this point, I'm going to ask both the applicant and any member of the public out there if they'd like to say anything else, otherwise I'm going to close the public hearing.
Ms. Rachel, I would like the applicant to address the question of access to this property. How is it proposed? It looks to me like there's no access to this property to a to a state road or any other road for that matter. And it looks like there are two separate rights of way issue as far as I agree anyway. One was shown on the plan attached to the most recent version made by the applicant, and that is this forty foot right of way to the western side of Lot Five, between Lot Five and Lot that seems to have nothing to do with the property at issue, it's not even, that the right of way doesn't doesn't go to the property at issue, so what is the access to the property at issue?
The, if I may, the access to that property is a approximately twelve foot road that has been there for probably three decades or more. It's there, it's ingrained, it will not be changed. We'll widen that up as need be, but but that road's been there for thirty years, and that's been the the primary access to the back, you know, the back forty. The dirt dirt mine or dirt pit.
Mr. Eric?
Yes.
The original submission that was dated November twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-one by Mr. Sanborn, there is a page included that's titled Suggested Description for Access and Utility Easements. I think what Mr. Sayers is asking, has this been executed?
I'm not aware of that, no.
So there is no access to the property?
The the access is the same access that we've had for thirty some years. And it's a twelve foot wide wide road. We can make that forty or fifty foot wide when the time comes, but, you know, it's access to my own property.
Yes, Mr. Arring owns, what we've been referring to is Lot Seven and the lot that we're talking about, so he can't really give himself a right of way.
Yeah, Lot Seven is unrelated, that right of way for Lot Seven is unrelated.
So if Mr. Arring didn't have this under contract to Mr. Sanborn, he still owns the property, he still has a way to get to the property across other property that he owns?
That's correct.
Plus, that'd be something that code enforcement would be in review of as any applications coming to the community development office.
Can we toss this one to Mr. Conkle?
Yeah, I mean, I, and I absolutely want to hear from the code officer, I'll just weigh in a little bit from my perspective, is that obviously, if you can't get there from here, then a building permit or an actual permit for what is asked for cannot be granted. But again, from my perspective, I look at our job as limited simply to whether or not those criteria under the undue hardship test have been met. And if in fact there is no access and the code enforcement officer so finds, then I would imagine that he will not issue that permit. But I don't think that's our job right now, I think our job is to simply look at the variance test and whether or not it's met. Now, he's going to have, assuming we grant it, again, I'm not saying we will, but even assuming we grant it, he will have to thread that needle about access at a subsequent point when he's asking for a building permit for the house and an actual permit for the the subsurface system from the LPI. So I may be taking an unduly narrow view of this, but I feel that that is a bit beyond the scope of our he's established our right title and interest, I think access, frontage, dimensional requirements, all of those things are a code enforcement officer in in his bailiwick, but I could be wrong, and I'd love to hear from the code officer on that, and then from my fellow board members for further discussion.
Yeah, that's correct, that is something that we review in all applications, it's required. So we would definitely be looking for his right of ways and all that criteria.
I, this is Stephen Sayers, I've got a question for the code enforcement officer, Mr. Conkle. Looking at the second criterion in granting variance appeals, the need for the variance must be due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. So it looks to me like we have here a property that doesn't have access to sewer, and it doesn't have access to a public or deeded access to a a public road. Are there any other properties in the in the in the neighbor, in the neighborhood that find themselves in the same condition of being of lacking a wastewater disposal field that's been approved already, and that they don't have access to to a road?
I've not done any review of the other parcels in the neighborhood to be able to answer to that.
Wayne Berry speaking. I believe Mr. Mr. Arring owns another parcel part of the foreclosure action that suffers the same restrictions. But that's not the general neighborhood, that's just another, it's another parcel.
Is there a question? I just want to make sure that any questions that are pending on the table have been answered. Mr. Sayers, did you get?
I really didn't get an answer to that question, I mean, it's the applicant's burden again to demonstrate the the unique circumstances of this particular property, and there's one, at least one other property that shares the circumstances of this property.
A suggestion that we go through each criteria individually, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get to that one, but I think it is obviously critically important, and I think you're quite right, it's the applicant's burden to satisfy each and every one of these criteria. But just so that we don't get turned around, why don't we go through each one individually, and and then we go from there, if that makes is that okay with everybody? Okay, so the first prong is simply this, that the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless a variance is granted. And again, you know, my understanding of the case law around this is that this is, this is not an easy burden, right? This is something that the cases and the courts have said over and over again, that reasonable return does not equal maximum return, right? Like, you're not assured a maximum return on your investment. So the question I think here is a somewhat unique one, because again, my understanding of the cases in Maine basically say that if there is a permitted use that you can have on this property, then that reasonable return criteria is met, and looking at the use chart for the Branch Brook A, I believe it allows things like, and I'm going to, I'm referring everybody to Article Eight, and it's Article Eight subsection C, which is entitled permitted uses, and then it gives the various uses allowed in Zone A and Zone B. And in addition to single family detached dwellings, it allows agriculture, it allows timber harvesting, it allows outdoor recreation. And so arguably, there are other permitted uses that would be allowed on that lot. Now, what complicates this for me frankly, is that the town of Kennybunk contemplates a variance specifically to allow single family dwellings and a septic system. And that is not the usual course in these cases that I'm talking about, that I'm thinking about. And so I think it is somewhat weird, it is somewhat unusual. One would think that if it's, should be allowed use, they should say it's an allowed use rather than having to get a use variance, but I do think this is unique, right? So that, you know, this is not a town that says that single family homes are specifically excluded from this, they say you can have one if you can get the variance, but it's almost a bit of a circular argument as far as I'm concerned, so I'll tell you, frankly, I'm a bit on the fence on whether or not you can get a reasonable return without a single family dwelling, so I'm going to put that out there. I'm still ruminating on this, but I'd like to hear from my fellow board members on that point.
Could I just ask the question? When was the single family dwelling approved by this board? This is just for the wastewater, correct?
I'm not sure there has been any approval, I'm talking specifically about the ordinance contemplating allowing a single family home plus an associated subsystem if you use variance, right?
And I'm asking, if I'm understanding this correctly, so it may have one single family dwelling and one wastewater disposal system located on it providing, secures a use variance, so there's, my understanding is there's already been a use variance for this not yet constructed single family home on the property in question, right? We're just talking about the parallelogram?
No, I think that's our job, I think our job is to grant or deny the request for the use variance, I look at them as, I understand that the application here was only for a subsurface system, but I I think that it almost presupposes a home, because why would you have a subsurface system just independently there without any structure to which it was serving? Mr. Arring, is that your intention?
Yes, that's my intention, it certainly doesn't make any, or does make a lot of sense to me to hire an architect and get designs for a house if we can't have a septic system.
But it's a permitted use, not a mandated use, and there are other permitted uses. Yep. Or as mentioned, wild crops, agriculture, excluding animal husbandry, timber harvesting in zone, dealing with only Zone A here as I understand it.
Yeah, I have a question for for Guy. What has the land been used for up until this point? You know, has it been used for any of these permitted uses?
The land had been used for excavating sand for decades and also as a junkyard, and it's took us decades, decades to clean that up. And, you know, we're ninety-nine percent there, we still have a little bit more to do. So it's been used for junkyard and dirt excavation.
Okay, this is a really important point that I need to ask a bit more questions about, because again, if there is a permitted use allowed that is economic, that gives you economic return, then that is very germane to the analysis, so my question is, Mr. Arring, on this particular lot, are we talking about that, or other lots, five, seven? Are are those uses continuing on that lot? Gravel extraction, sand extraction?
Well, actually, this lot did not have any excavation, and I'm not certain it had any any junk cars or junk trucks on this lot, because this lot is mostly borrowed land, it's peaks and valleys.
Okay.
But I'm confident if I went to the the town of Kennybunk and said, you know, I'd like to start up a junkyard again, or I'd like to start excavating, I'm.
Well, that was the critical point, is that if it's a nonconforming use, and we know it's a non yards and extraction are nonconforming in that zone, but if are continuing, if that's a continuing use and it was permitted at the time, that's important. What I'm hearing, and I'm asking the code officer to confirm, that there, A, junkyards and extraction are not permitted uses in that zone, and you are not currently engaged in that, those uses on that parcel.
Within the last three years.
Within the last three years.
Right, correct. To my knowledge, yeah, one is permitted use, and to my knowledge that they have not been used as those. Right, correct. To my knowledge, yeah, one is permitted use and to my knowledge that they have not been used as those as they had before.
I I'm sorry, can you can you say that again? I didn't hear that.
No, neither one of those junkyards or gravel pits are permitted uses for that zone. And my understanding it had not been in use for those uses. Uh this property has not been in use for those uses for more than three years.
Okay, and 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 the reason that, just for everybody listening, the reason why that three is important is be that's a nonconforming use. Our ordinance includes resumption of a nonconforming. It's within three years. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So that's not an issue. All right. So I think the question that our 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 board has to contemplate is would you um would the land not yield a reasonable return unless the variance was granted? So I open up that to discussion among my fellow board members.
Should the applicant explain the reasoning for that?
Yeah, we have. I I should say that I and I and I can easily read it. Mr. Arring said he rests on the justification in the in the written submission he made. So just for the record, I will say that the reason why the applicant states that the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted is this. And I'm just reading it out loud. The placement of a subsurface wastewater disposal is necessary for other allowed uses on the lot, permitted allowed uses on the lot. Since connection to a public store is impossible, onsite wastewater disposal is the only feasible alternative. Lacking the ability to dispose wastewater on site, this lot cannot provide reasonable return consistent with other lots in the neighborhood. So that is the justification. Mr. Arring, if you want to add anything to that, we'd be happy to hear it. Otherwise, we'll just continue to deliberate.
That sums it up.
I have a question. Could somebody speak to the other lots in the neighborhood? Are there a number of single family dwellings close by? You know, or is this, you know, more rural, non-buildable lots nearby?
Do you want me to share my screen with the GIS up? It shows what's around it. Does that be helpful?
I will say that I I think that's an extremely important question, but I also think that that's more germane to the second prong when we're talking about the unique circumstances of the of the property. Unless my fellow board member feels that it bears on the reasonable return prong, and I I don't want to cut off conversation. I just want to make sure we're clear about, you know, our fight.
More for reasonable return, you know, if if it's just agricultural land, you know, it doesn't necessarily need a single family dwelling for reasonable return. If it's just for like timber harvesting or those other uses. I think that's what he has to prove is, does he really need a house on it to to make reasonable return? All right, so what do we?
So this this lot right here is the lot in question, the one that has the the teal line around it. These look like single family homes all throughout.
So does his lot include lot five, seven, you know, all those lots that we saw in the triangle? Like, where is that triangle?
So this this is the, let me zoom out. This is that subdivision plan that you have.
Oh, okay.
And this this is lot seven that he also owns. And this is the lot in question. And it looks like these are mostly all single families. Single families along here. This is where they were taking material out, it looks like. Couple of single families up through here. This looks like there's a subdivision up here, which you're getting further away, but that's pretty much what these are. Just open land, it looks like.
So the the main issue we have here is the aquifer. The other lots are not within that. Is that what we're seeing with that kind of the curve?
This right here. This is the BBA zone, which needs that special relief for the septic. These blue lines are the BBA, which is also protecting the aquifer, but has different restrictions. This, the B the BBA zone is more restrictive due to its proximity to the branch.
Are there any other houses within that zone?
These houses appear to be in that zone. This house.
Which one?
Yeah, these houses here. And this house appears also to be in that zone.
Okay, I didn't realize those were houses in that. Okay, I see him. Your screen has a little delay, so.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay, you see it now?
Yeah, I can see it very well. Okay. And so all those houses must have gotten variances?
I don't I don't know when they were built, and I'm assuming, and I could be wrong, and Wayne, please correct me. The eighty six must have been when this provision was enacted, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm assuming they were built before eighty six, but that may not be the case.
I'm sure most of them were.
Yeah.
Yep, sixty eight.
Yeah.
Okay, that puts that's helpful. Thank you.
No, but I think they were looking at a tax card and it said it was built in sixty eight.
I I pulled up the vision card and it said that one that I clicked on was built in sixty eight, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Berry.
I have two questions for Mr. Arring. Are all of the properties that you own entirely within the BBA zone?
I I believe I believe they all are, yes.
There is none that is portion of any of those lots in the BBB zone?
Well, the one triangular lot, which is lot number seven of the other subdivision, I think there's a small corner of that that might be in the other zone.
Guys, have you pursued the avenue of having an offsite septic system?
Excuse me?
Have you looked at the possibility that you could have a septic system on one of your other properties that you could pump from this property to?
Well, they're all, it wouldn't be, I don't, in my mind, it wouldn't be possible because they're all in in the same zone except for a far corner of the front lot.
Well, that would be the corner I'd be looking at. And I, the second question goes to the question of reasonable return. Have you had a conversations with any of the abutters who might be interested in purchasing any of these lots? Or with the water district who might be interested in purchasing these lots to provide you a return?
I had conversation with 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 one neighbor, but but not with regard to to this forward lot, which seems more suited for a single family residence.
Was that, I guess that was a yes?
Yes.
Have you had any conversations with the water district regarding this lot?
I have not personally, no.
Has anyone else?
I don't know.
Any fellow board members, Mr. Seventy, Mr. Brunel, Mr. Sayers, have any questions of the applicant or comments regarding reasonable return prong?
Mr. Arring, have you ever undertaken any inquiries regarding potential use of this property for this, the uses that are referred to in the zoning ordinance? Forest management, harvesting of wild crops, agriculture excluding animal husbandry, timber harvesting, outdoor recreation involving minimal structural development or regarding or regrading of the land such as fishing, hunting, hiking and cross-country skiing or the other uses referred to in the zoning ordinance?
I've I've read through the zoning ordinances, trying to determine, you know, how I could make a return, but especially that lot, it's 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 peaks and valleys. It's it's difficult to walk across it because it it's so, it's such a jagged, it's you could fall and you could roll for for two or three minutes. It's so steep in areas. So there's really only one location even consider building building a house, and that's in that that one corner. The rest is the seasonal stream that runs down through the middle of it and and steep ravine going down into that stream. I know Mr. Jones wanted to build a a lake there one time, but you know, it just wouldn't hold water. Horses would break their legs. I can't think of any crop.
Are there trees growing on the property?
Mostly scrub trees, pine trees, very little oak or anything like that.
And pardon, you said this was a a junkyard previously?
Well, the two back lots were junkyard. This this forward lot was the entrance to the junkyard.
Thank you.
I I I'm puzzled by that. How could it be an entrance if it's landlocked?
The um the twelve-foot road to the the back excavation area that had been there for thirty or forty years or so, that just it goes over, it goes along the southern side of the triangular lot number seven. And it 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 goes over the corner of this lot that we're talking about. And then it goes back to the other two lots where the earth was excavated and then ultimately your cars and trucks were stored out there.
Okay, thank you.
It certainly looks from the materials that you've submitted, Mr. Arring, that part of this property anyway was used in the active, whatever the activities were that were conducted to the south of the the property. Is that right?
I don't follow the question, sorry.
I'm looking at one of the photographs that were submitted by Longview Partners in overhead photographs. And it shows in in yellow the outline of the property and then immediately to the south of that, a large area of disturbed land. And it looks like the the least part of the road here went up through the property at issue. It's a property bounded in yellow. What exactly is the activities that were being conducted to the immediate south of the property?
Immediately south of the property.
Guy, that's where you said they were doing excavation. I can pull that up again on my screen. That might be a little bit helpful. Can can everyone see my screen?
Oh, yeah, yeah, got it.
This is the lot to the south that I believe he's speaking about. This is, this is, this is, I can't select, this is the lot we're talk, this is the lot we're talking about currently, and he's asking about this lot to the south.
That's all excavation area. From what I understand, the sand was good for golf courses. It had the right texture, so it was shipped all over Maine and New England for golf courses as as I understand it.
Mr. Seventy and Mr. Brunel, any any comments, questions that you you want to add to the mix?
I'm curious, is is there a way to clarify the definition of a a neighborhood in terms of general conditions in the neighborhood?
You're on the second.
Yeah. We, I can speak to that actually a little bit, but but I think we're still on the reasonable return criteria, which is the first one.
I understand. My mistake. I'll save that one then.
Yeah, and I I guess as far as reasonable return, what's the, I guess, what is the definition of that? Like, so if you don't put a house on this, you can't make your money back on this property?
Yeah, that's a really, it's a very good question. And again, my understanding of the case law around that is that it's really a tough, it's a tough burden. And the cases are pretty clear that unless it amounts to essentially almost a a takings, you know, that that notion of a of a a takings without compensation, that it's a pretty stringent standard. And so again, like I said before, the courts say that reasonable return does not equal maximum return. You are not entitled to maximize your return on that property. And they say that if there is other permit or there are other permitted uses that to which you can make, you know, to which you that property, then you you can do so and should do so and that the grant, excuse me, the variance request should be denied. What I heard, you know, so so we look to the land use table and we ask ourselves what other uses can this property be put to? And we see agriculture, timber harvesting, recreation, those kinds of things. I heard the applicant say that, well, that's all well and good, but from a factual standpoint that I can't use my property in that way because it's steep, because ankles will be broken, you know. So it's incumbent on us, it's our job to determine whether the facts support a conclusion that the property cannot be used for those other uses, meaning agriculture, timber harvesting, you know, are there trees? Can plants grow there? Can there be a disc golf course? You know, those kinds of questions, right? That's
Hunting trails.
Right, right. Because you can't get a single family home on there, I don't think means you can't get a reasonable return. How i- in the abstract, however, I think we need to look at the facts that have been presented us to say, okay, fine. You know, just because you can't get a house on there doesn't mean you don't have a reasonable return. But now let's look at what other uses to which this this, what other permitted uses this property can be put to and then ask ourselves, does the fa- do the facts support a conclusion that he can do agriculture on that lot? That he can do recreation on that lot, that he can do timber harvesting on that lot. Because if the facts do not support a conclusion, then maybe we say, hey, the only reasonable way to get a return on that investment, or not investment, but the reasonable return on the property is a single family home. So I think it's, it is a fact-specific inquiry and we need to look at those facts. And we need to ask ourselves if the applicant has met his burden.
Mr. Arring, have have you actually formed any studies as to whether the other permitted uses that are specified in the zoning ordinance could be conducted on this property or could not? Have you uh have you undertaken any any such studies?
Yeah, I'm a I'm a industrial engineer and the the surveyor Scott, you know, I think he's on my side that we we don't think it makes any sense to try to grow crops or walk a horse through there or, yeah, you know, I'm an engineer. I know real estate to some extent of of invested and bought and sold. And I just think that, you know, the only use for that is a single family residence.
So you, did you look into recreation? Meaning, like she said, a disc golf course, hiking trails, you know, if you have a lot of hills and stuff.
It's just, it's not a lot of hills. It's just, it's just ravine. And remember, across Route ninety nine, we already have, I don't know, dozens, if not hundreds of acres of 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 hiking trails. I see people out there all the all the time. I can't imagine that people are going to want to come on my very steep, I think it's a an eight acre lot. And if so, you know, would we want to put in outhouses so that have a place to go? And if we did, then we'd want to have a septic system. So we're we're back to the septic system conceivably.
Have you looked into the the three lots that are adjacent to your lot and to see if you could sell the land to them, you know, in order to make a reasonable return?
So I I'm going to just jump in there and and I could be wrong on this, but my understanding of case law is that if the only basis to deny somebody a variance based on reasonable return is that, hey, you could have sold it to an abutter, that that the the courts have said that's not enough, that we need to avoid that. So I could be wrong on that, but I I have a recollection about that. So I would, I would, I'm not saying that we don't consider that, but if that's the sole basis for our decision, that I think we should be stay clear of that.
One thing it would be fair to say, Mr. Arring, is that the justification for variance request that has been submitted by Longview Partners, actually as part of Mr. Sanborn's original application. Actually as part of Mr. Sanborn's original, uh, application, uh, they didn't, um. Conduct any analysis of whether, um, any of the other permitted uses under the zoning ordinance in this particular. Zone would be, um, feasible, did they?
I think by them looking at the, at the land, it was obvious to them. But to write up a big report, um, I don't, I don't think they did that.
Well, I think what I'll do at this point is, um. Unless folks have additional questions and if they do, by all means, I'm not trying to shut down conversation, but I think what I would do at this point, if there aren't any. Um, that week, I would entertain a motion on this particular point.
Can I pose one more question, actually? So if the lot, the, the lot south of it were to be used for extraction or anything of the sort again. Would you see, uh, heavy vehicles so close to this residential lot as, as being an issue?
I, I'd ask the co- the code officer to clarify, but because that use is no.
I understand. I'm sorry, I, I retract the question.
Could be wrong though. I, 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 I just wanna ask, uh, cause it's a great question. I just wanna make.
And maybe I should clarify where I'm coming from. I, I'm just thinking, i- it seems as if this is essentially the, the entry point to those southern, uh. Properties and that's been its, its essential sole use up until now. So I'm just wondering if, if this pivot to its residential use. Is, um, also kinda thinking through if, if we're now boxing in those two southern two properties as well in terms of what they can then be used for?
Well, those properties will never be used for excavation again because it's, it's just not a permitted use. It's been at least three years since, since that was, uh, was a permitted use back then.
And can those, those lots can't be accessed via another public way or private way? Is there, uh, there's no access of, for those southern lots, is there?
Well, there is, um, access to the far lot. And that's the right of way that goes down, um, lot number, uh, five, I believe it is.
Yeah, I see that. I see Mr. Barry is, is, uh, struggling with the thought.
I am, I have it because of my relationship with the water district. But I would, I would, uh, direct the board's attention, attention to C. Five. Which is the following utility uses, essential services.
Oh, are you on the land use table?
I'm under, yeah.
Permitted uses.
Article eight, page four. Paragraph C. Dash one. So it goes back to my question of. And I don't wanna be a lobbyist for the water district necessarily. But if one of the uses is essential services, the water district is an essential service. And that's why I asked the question if, if, if the district. Had questions about buying or purchasing the property. Now, I understand your basis of argument on case law isn't about. Selling, it's about using. One of the permitted uses is essential services. Then that would require selling some of the land to Water District. Or any other essential service.
I guess I'm, I'm not following because I read that as one of the many listed permitted uses. So I, I guess I'm, I'm not following the logic.
Well, my, my logic is that if, if essential services are a permitted use.
Yeah.
Then is, can he get a reasonable return from that use?
You mean by selling it to an essential service? Yeah, but, but I, I think that our job is. To think about what his use could be, right? And, and he's not an essential service. I, I, a- and I, I absolutely understand where you're going. It's just, it makes, it makes sense. I'm just a little cautious about. Making a decision that a reasonable return cannot be had. Because, well, you can always sell it two and a butter, right? That, that, that is, and I'm, I'm not saying that's your argument. I think that that was in the cases, the courts say, look, you cannot compel somebody to sell something two and a butter. Because it could be at a fire sale price or, or, or whatever. Um, and I'm not sure of the, the, the facts around those cases, but I, I just have this memory in my head that, oh, oh, we gotta be careful about that.
I'm, I'm not sure that you could compel it, an owner to use one of the other permitted uses either.
Well, that is part of the, of if you can get a reasonable return, is if you look at a land use table, right? And there are other things that you can do with it. But then I think we need to, and, and as we have, and the applicant has talked about, okay, sure, there are those other uses. But then is that viable for that particular lot? And we've heard evidence on that. And I think, you know, to me, it's, it's, it's still a really tough call on, on, on this, but. I think either we ask additional questions to help clarify or somebody makes a motion and, and we vote how we think the evidence.
I, I have a question, a couple for the, the owner. Uh, when did you buy the property?
It's gotta be, um. I'm guessing, you know, five, six, seven years ago at auction.
Yeah, and what was your, your goal when you bought? What's that? Okay, and what was your goal? What was your goal when you bought the property?
My goal when I bought the property. Get it cleaned up. You know, I'd love to have a, a family compound back there. I'd like to keep those roads in place and. Put some grass seed around and level it out, um, in, in a couple areas. Yeah, I think it'd make a, a nice. Who knows? The back lots may be a, a farm at some point. But that's just a dream. I'm not a farmer.
So the house that you're, you wanna build, is that something you're gonna be living in or something you're gonna sell?
May live in it, may sell it, may, may sell to, uh, Mr. Sanborn.
Just kinda wondering the big, the plan.
Yeah.
If you lived in the house, so that wouldn't provide you with an economic return, would it?
If I lived in it, would it? Provide me with an economic return? When I, you know, when I'm done living it and, and then sell it, it would.
Well.
If I, if, maybe if I, if I have a business in there, you know, that, that could, uh, provide an economic return. So yeah, I, I, I guess, uh, if I live in it, it could, it would.
I, I don't wanna rush the board in any way, shape or form, but is, do you guys still have a lot of battery left on that phone? I just would hate for this to get cut off while we're mid discussion, um, and we've kind of, you've spoken about this first criteria for quite a while. Um, I just wanna make sure you have enough battery for the, the rest of the criteria to go through.
We're looking.
But battery left.
Yes, but I. Your point, Brittany, I think we should move this forward. Again, not trying to cut off discussion, but. Unless there is additional information that would help our, my fellow board members make a decision, I think it is.
I got one quick question. So you, you just mentioned a business. Is this zoned for a business?
I don't think it's zoned for business, but if, if I.
I was just wondering, cause it, it could be something you could use the property for.
Um, I have, I have another question, um, for the owner. If, uh, if you're all done, John?
Yeah.
If you weren't able, or I'm sorry, uh, the sale price, do you have any background as to how that was arrived on? How you calculated or estimated the value when you did purchase it?
I'm sorry, repeat the question?
How did you, uh, come up with the bid for the property when you purchased it? Was it based on certain assumptions that, of, of the land use or, or? Uh, predicted return?
Well, it, it's, it's sort of a, a personal issue. I'm more than happy to, to disclose that, um, Mr. Jones was like a, a, a dear friend, almost like a father. And, um, you know, he owed me some money and. And, you know, he'd call me and say, hey, guy, you know, I need to make it through the winter. You know, can you lend me another $5,000 for, you know, for oil or this, that and, 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 you know, I, I did. And, um, so I had a mortgage and, and I, you know, he was supposed to, you know, the, the interest just accumulated. And other times he said, you know, I need some five batteries for my excavator. Can you buy me five batteries? And, you know, didn't quite buy the batteries, but, you know, I, he was a dear friend, like a father. And the purchase price was what I was owed plus interest.
So just to clarify, you're, you're saying that the price at which you purchased the property for, uh, that which you're hoping he had a return on. That was not based on the proper, the value of the property per se as much as, uh, some previous transactions and reconciling. That, that you had with the previous owner? I can restate that if I'm being long-winded. Um, ju- just to say that the amount of money you paid for the property wasn't calculated based on the value of the property per se.
No, I may well have overpaid for the property or I may well have underpaid for the property, but, you know, it, it is what it was at the time.
Okay, I appreciate the information.
Mr. Arring, um, the fact is this property was purchased as part of a foreclosure sale, right?
That's correct.
And you foreclosed on the, uh, property, uh, based upon the failure of your, uh, friend, Mr. Uh, Jones to pay, re- repay the mortgage, right?
Well, you know, this had been going, and again, you know, I, I don't know, this is awfully personal. But, um, this had gone on for 15 or 20 years and, and Mr. Jones was a dear friend and I. I, I never, I never even threatened that he had to pay me interest. Because I, I, I suspected my, my investment was, my loan was, was secure. And it wasn't until after Mr. Jones passed away, unfortunately, I saw him a week before, before he was gone and I, I spoke with Sandy and. And before you know it, the next week he was gone and, and, um. You know, we, we were heartfelt, but then, uh, I don't know, months later, years later, then, uh, well, it had to be months later. Uh, there was, it went to probate or whatever they do. I don't know a lot about that either. And I, I, I mentioned to the, to the court that, hey, you know, I'm, I'm, I have a mortgage on that or, and, and there you go. That's, that's how it happened. So yes, I, but ultimately after Mr. Jones passed away, I, I foreclosed on the property. To recoup my, my loan, loans.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion on this first prong? Unless there are further questions for the applicant or the applicant wishes to make any more submissions on this? Mr. Barry.
Just to clarify, past questions to Mr. Arring. Was it, it wasn't clear to me that he's explored other options for a reasonable return on this property? Can that be clarified?
Is the question to me, sir?
Yes. It is, Mr. Barry, weigh in on that, please.
Yeah, I've walked the property numerous times and I see no other use for it.
I think my question was more specific. Have you explored all of the options to see if you get a reasonable return on this?
I'm confident that I have not explored all the options, but some of those options would be prohibitively expensive. And so I. Didn't give them a second thought.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, I'll make a motion that the landed question can yield a reasonable return unless it's granted. First prong.
So just to clarify for fellow board members, that the motion is that it cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. So, uh, a vote in the affirmative would essentially be, um, saying that on that prong. The applicant has satisfied his burden. I just wanna make sure, Mr. Barry, yeah, okay. So motion on the table that the landing question cannot yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. Do I hear a second for the motion? I'll second it. So we have a motion made in a second. Um, how, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the role and. Barry?
I vote nay.
Mr. Sarah?
I vote nay that, uh, the applicant has failed to demonstrate the first prong of the required test has been satisfied.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure we're, we're clear that. No, go ahead.
Is that a no or a yes?
That was a no. No.
I gotta make sure we're all on the same page here. So the motion is made is the land cannot yield a reasonable return unless the grant. Unless the variance is granted.
Sorry, yeah, my vote is yes. No, wait a minute.
So the.
That the landing question.
I think you just confused things.
My vote is no, sorry.
Perhaps the motion was a negative motion.
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't like making negative motions, but the language itself is, is in the negative, so. Um, I think that, so just to clarify, and I, and if I'm making it less clear, tell me so, right? That the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return unless a variance is granted. The no vote means that you are voting against the variance.
As Mr. Sarah stated, he didn't believe that the applicant has demonstrated. The first prong.
Yes, okay, so no, nay means that the burden, that the applicant has not met his burden.
Correct.
For the first.
Correct.
Okay, so moving along, we have two nays. I have Mr. Barry voting nay, Mr. Sarah's voting nay. Mr. Brunel, how do you vote?
I also vote no, the burden has not been met.
And Mr. Seventy?
I also vote no.
And the chair votes no as well. So that prong, um, has not been satisfied. And what I will say is that, as I said at the outset, in these variance cases, we need to, um. A- a- if you get a no on any of the criteria, that means ultimately that we will, mustn't deny. But I do encourage my board, fellow board members to go through each and every one, because if there is an appeal and we got it wrong. That other three issues become relevant and as much as we enjoy each other's company, I think that we would rather not have to get a remand. So let's, if I, if, if everybody's on the same page, I think we should move forward with this, the second prong, if, if we're okay with that. Okay, I know it takes a little bit more time, but I think in, in the end, it could save us a lot of time and energy. Um, so the next, um, criteria is the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property. And not the general conditions of the neighborhood. And I think we have heard quite a bit of evidence on that. But, um, I'll, I'll, I'll open this up for my fellow board members to either deliberate or to ask addition in that regard. So, Mr. Barry, I think you look like you may have a question or a comment.
The question I have for the applicant is, could he explain specifically the unique circumstances of the property? As opposed to the neighborhood?
I'm sorry, I don't follow the question.
How is your property different than the rest of the neighborhood?
It doesn't have a septic system. It's, uh, it has a stream, a seasonal stream running through the middle of it.
Mr. Arring, you had mentioned, I think, that there, it's quite hilly, there's hills and dales and, and up and down. And the topography is pretty uneven. Can you speak, what, what about surrounding lots there?
The surrounding lots, they, they level out a little bit from there. You know, the, the three houses up front on the road that were built back in the sixties, those are more level. Lot number seven, where, where I have a residence there, that's more level. Mr. Along the, the main highway, those lots are more level. And as we go further back into the, the aquifer, it's, it's more level. But, but this, this area, there's two lots, so they're pretty steep.
What, are you able to?
No, I can't hear you, no.
Right, yeah.
Can you, are you, is that, is that phone getting text messages or emails? I hear a lot of tinging in the back, which might be cutting off your sound on your end.
It is, that's probably happening. Can you hear me?
Can you hear? I'm turning off my phone.
No, I don't think it's your phone. I think if the phone that they're, they're talking on is getting emails or texts, it's cutting off their sound on their end. Leah, you muted yourself? Um, you're back, you're back now.
Okay, I'm, I'm back in, back on?
Yeah, you were muted for a little bit.
Okay, I'm gonna not touch anything and just leave.
Okay, so one thing I did, I wanted to ask is uniqueness. You talked about topography access, is that also, is that a unique factor here in your view?
Um, that's, that's unique, that we don't have access to the, other than a right of way, eventually, we don't have access to a main road.
Okay, anything else that you think that makes this unique?
Not that I can think of offhand.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion with respect to the unique circumstances.
I move that the applicant has failed to shoulder the burden of proof that the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood.
I will second that if I understand that it was a positive motion that applicant has failed to prove the second prong. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I think we should, I, I like the way this is phrased, that, that the applicant has failed to meet their burden of satisfying this, this prong. What I will say is, I've heard the motion made, I've heard it seconded. For discussion purposes, I think it's important that we say why we believe it is not unique. Just to paper that for the record, if that is in fact your, your.
I don't think that, that the evidence that I've heard tonight anyway, and I'm just speaking for myself here. And the other members are free to make their own decisions on this, but the applicant basically didn't really consider any of the other permitted uses for this property. And in that sense, he's failed to show that there are unique circumstances for this property. He's just, the only use which he thought it was going to be put was apparently which it is going to be put, he's going to sell it to someone else. And the general conditions of the neighborhood seem to, there's nothing that specifically marks this, that this property is different from the other adjacent properties, as far as I can tell. And again, it's a, it's a fairly stringent test. And it's the obligation of the applicant to come forward with proof on each of these prongs. And I don't believe that he's come forward with proof on this particular prong.
Any other board members wish to add to that discussion? Mr. Barry?
I would, I would ask that we, we look at the explanation from Longview under paragraph B. As the building site, I'm quoting now. As the building site and environments are located entirely within the aquifer protection zone, the need for variance has specifically to do with the unique circumstance of this lot. And we have heard from Mr. Eric tonight that other lots in the neighborhood are, suffer the same condition, but maybe have already been built on before the ordinance was passed. So I don't believe that there is a uniqueness to this lot other than the fact it wasn't built on at some point.
Yeah, and, and further to that, going even further, the uniqueness, if there are other unbuilt lots, that, that to me is even more unique, right, right? Or less unique, I should say, is that if this is the only unbuilt lot in that area, then that would be truly unique. Um, and I guess I'd ask Brittany, I, I don't have the imprint of that visual on my, in my brain, but I seem to recall that the aerial that you showed with the various built lots and unbuilt lots, that there were more than one unbuilt lot in this Branch Brook A zone, is that correct?
Well, Mr. Arring has testified that he owned another lot.
I'm looking at it now, I was noting the same thing. It seems as if the houses we're mostly talking about are in zone B. And zone A, while there are some houses, general conditions are mostly lots like this that don't have construction on them or single family construction.
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, it looks like there's like three, at least three, maybe five lots that are within BBA that are not built on.
Um, also though, to be fair, the large, I'm gonna share my screen again. The large lot is owned by, let me share my screen. The water district and one is owned by the state of Maine.
Yes.
Can you, everyone see my screen? This lot is owned by the applicant. This lot is owned by also the applicant. This large lot is owned by KKW. This large lot is owned by the state of Maine.
Okay. Are you, it could still sell those lots or apply for structures on them?
This large lot is also owned by the state of Maine.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Isn't there clarification that this lot is not unique?
I, I think that, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the evidence. I'm just asking that the evidence support the conclusion, and I think there is sufficient evidence in that regard. So I think we've got, and anybody else want to weigh in as far as that discussion point on the uniqueness piece on prong two? Okay, so I think we have a pending motion made in second that the applicant has failed to meet his burden of satisfying that the need for a variance is due to unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood. So a, an affirmative vote would be to say that the applicant has not met his burden. So I'm gonna call the roll. Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Sayers?
Yes.
Mr. Seventy?
Yes.
And Mr. Brunel?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So we have unanimous yes vote on that motion. Okay, the next criteria is with respect to granting of the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. If we wanna, I, I can entertain a motion on that or we can talk a bit just generally about what we think the essential character of the locality is and what that means. My understanding of that, there was a recent case out of the law court that talks about essential character. It was out of the town of Wells and it dealt with, and actually it was another variance case talking about whether or not a single family home should be built in this case was in the shoreland zone. And the court was talking, this is a fairly new case, and the court was talking about how the essential character of a locality, you need to look at the purpose of the, of the area and the surrounding area. And, and basically, you know, what is the essential character of that locality? You know, we, we, we've seen pictures, we've seen that there are houses in this care, in this neighborhood. There are empty lots in this neighborhood. And I think we need to ask ourselves, hey, would granting the variance say a, a house was built here? Would that somehow inherently change the character of that area or locality? I'll tell you, I'm inclined to say that no, it would not. There are a bunch of houses there already. If this was just a neighborhood where there is absolutely nothing, no development, then I would say, you know, I, I would feel otherwise, but in this particular prong, it's my sense that the granting of the variant variance would not alter the essential character and that the, the burden has been satisfied by the applicant. That's one person's view. I don't think we have a motion made or seconded, so I'll entertain one or further discussion.
I will move that the granting of a variant will not alter the essential character of the character.
I'll second.
Quality.
There was, Leah, I'm not sure if you heard, there was a second by a Zoom member, by Paul.
There was, there's made the second, I believe.
No. It was Mr. Seventy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just don't know who said it first.
It was, it was, I have it as Paul showing up first with the second of that motion. Sorry, Leah, just for the record.
Hey, I'm clarifying.
Okay.
So we have a motion duly made and seconded that the granting of a variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. So in essence, if I take your motion, Mr. Barry, is that it, an affirmative vote here is to say that it essentially is in favor of granting that, saying that the applicant met his burden.
That, that was my intention with the motion, how I stated it.
Yep. So I'm gonna call the roll. Mr. Barry? Your vote?
I vote aye.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Sayers?
Yes.
Mr. Seventy?
Hi.
Mr. Brunel?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so that motion carries in the affirmative. And then we have the last prong, the hardship is not a result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. And that's what they call the self-created hardship prong. And that basically means that the, the prior owner or the current owner is responsible for this problem. And that is the classic example where, say, you have a minimum lot size of one acre and you convey out half an acre and therefore you have created a non-conformity and it's your fault. That's the classic example. Here, again, this is just one person's view. I, I think that this, the need for the variance here is because of a change of an ordinance. And that wasn't something that the applicant, I don't believe the applicant was responsible or created that hardship for themselves. But that's, again, that's, that's my perspective and I want to hear from all the other board members. Or somebody could just make a motion and we could go from there.
I move that the applicant has demonstrated that the hardship asserted by him is not the result of action taken by him or a prior owner.
I, I, I'll second that.
So, Barry speaking. My question is, if the applicant knew that there were restrictions on this property that existed at the time of his foreclosure, auction, purchase, however you want to describe the acquisition, is that a self-created hardship?
So my understanding of the case law on that is that is one factor that may be considered in the, however, it cannot be the only factor. So, um, yeah, and that was a question that was raised in this recent case in the Hill case, Wells and Hill case. And so I think there's clarification there that, again, you can factor that in. But if that's the only thing that you're hanging your hat on, so to speak, then it's not enough.
So we're looking at the properties of the real estate and not the properties of the purchaser? Is that what you're saying?
Um.
In the case law?
That, I'm not sure, say, say that again, wait.
That the hardship is a factor of the real estate comes with the real estate versus whoever owns it?
Oh, it can be the applicant or a prior owner.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I think you can look at a prior owner. But again, my sense is here, and I could be missing something, that the problem here is part and parcel. It's created by this becoming a non-conforming use, right? And not, even if the purchaser knew that it was non-conforming when they purchased it, and the, and then the question, of course, is, well, then why the heck did you purchase it? And now you're asking for a variance. That's not enough. They have to have done something to their property or conveyed out a certain parcel that they, in essence, created the problem for themselves.
From my perspective, there are two factors here that militate against an affirmative vote on my motion. And the, the first is that Mr. Arring purchased this lot in a foreclosure sale. He knew exactly what the restrictions on the use were and what he would have to do in order to be able to get a variance to enable him to use the property in the way that he now proposes. But the second factor, that's not the only factor. If it were, that might not be enough. But, and again, he didn't investigate any of the other permitted uses under the ordinance. He just ignored them and assumed that the, the maximum economic benefit, which would be a potential sale of the property, since he had a contract with Mr. Sandborn to do exactly that shortly after acquiring the property. That's what he was going for and he didn't consider, and nor did the entities retained by Mr. Sandborn consider the alternative uses that are specifically permitted by the zoning ordinance. So a combination of those two factors leads me to believe that the applicant has failed to demonstrate that the hardship of which he complains is not the result of action taken by him. And so I'm gonna withdraw my initial motion and make a substitute motion that the applicant has failed to carry the burden of demonstrating that the hardship of which he complains.
Hold on, Mr. Sayers, I'm, I'm, I gotta catch up with you.
Sure.
Do they make seconded? In order to
Seconded?
Yeah, I believe it was, actually, Brittany, was it seconded? I think, I think I seconded it.
Maybe I, you did.
I think I did.
Okay.
So I'm trying to remember Robert's rules here, but if we have a motion duly made and seconded, I'm not sure if it can be withdrawn. And I'm looking to Mr. Barry, who's probably dealt with this way more than I have in your selectman role.
I don't believe it's necessary to withdraw that motion and change it. All it is, is that whether it's an affirmative vote or a negative vote on the initial motion.
Yes.
The intent, aim is just a matter of how you vote.
You're gonna vote on it, yes, yes. And so what I think your motion was, and again, I could, it's hard to follow, we're all getting tired here. But I think you said the applicant has demonstrated or has met his burden that the hardship is not a result of the action taken by him or a prior owner. Okay, so.
So, sorry, just for clarification, that, that is the motion that was made. And you can vote no on a motion that you've made too, if he decide, if you want to decide to vote no on that.
That's probably procedurally the best way to go.
And that is what I will do.
Okay, okay, all right. So let's call the roll. I heard Mr. Sayers vote, he's voting no. How about you, Mr. Mr. Barry?
Are there any other questions from the?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have asked, and to your point, I'm not sure that we looked at Longview Partners' perspective on that, which is essentially the applicant's argument for why. So, out, on the self-created hardship prong, it says the sole reason for the variance request is to allow wastewater disposal. A wastewater disposal system in an area mapped as an aquifer protection zone by the town of Kennebunk. This designation as an aquifer protection zone occurred after the creation of this lot. No action by the applicant or previous ownership has caused the reason for this variance request. So I tend to agree with that. I absolutely take Mr. Sarah's point about he did not investigate the other possibilities. But from my perspective, that's more goes towards the reasonable return analysis rather than it's a analysis rather than a creating of the problem itself. So, um, with that said, I think we've got Mr. Sarah's votes, no. Mr. Barry, I'm not sure if you did vote on that. We were still asking.
I haven't voted yet.
And, and we were asking other members if they had any questions or if they wanted to weigh in on that. Um, Mr. Brunel and Mr. Seventy, before we vote, is there any commentary? Or, or anything else you'd like to deliberate on before we get into your vote?
No.
I, I, I'll say I, I can understand the perspective shared. Personally, I tend to read this as a more direct, uh, plain result of action and, and I think, uh, personally, the burden has been met at a very, very simple level and, uh, I still respect the, I respect it's on the matter.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I did, then can you weigh in then on your vote? That's Mr. That was Mr. Brunel, correct?
Correct. Yes, I'm voting yes. The burden has been met.
Okay, how about you, Mr. Seventy?
I'm gonna say no, the burden has not been met.
Okay, Barry.
Caveat actor.
Okay, no. And the chair, Leah, Rachel, and I vote yes. So it looks like it's, uh, three nos, two yeses, and therefore, um, the applicant has not met his burden and on this fourth prong. And so we have gone through the process. We have taken votes on which I believe are duty to and vote on whether or not the use variance as requested um, should be granted or denied. I think the die is obviously cast, but I think we need to take our final vote just to, um, tie it up in a neat package. And so I will make the motion that we deny the use variance request, um, before us. And so that is the motion to deny the, the, the variance request.
Seconded.
Okay, I'm gonna call the roll. Mr. Barry?
I agree, aye.
So aye to deny.
Correct, aye.
Mr. Sayers votes, um, yes to deny. Mr. Seventy?
Aye.
Mr. Brunel?
I vote yes.
And also the chair votes yes. So there's a unanimous vote to deny the request for the use variance. Um, so based on that, it is my understanding that process dictates that the applicant has, um, the right of appeal to Superior Court and that is to, um, the section Board of Appeals. Um, I believe it is a forty-five day period, but I'm going to look just because I certainly don't want to misquote that. Just give me one second. And yes, according to the ordinance and appeal may be taken within forty-five days after the decision is rendered by any party to the Superior Court. Now, my understanding is our decision is rendered as of the date we vote on that, not the written decision. And so, um, I know we have a secretary here who generates the, um, the written findings, which we will review and sign. But the, um, date for actual appeal, the clock starts ticking today, just for, for your purposes. And so with that, I think that concludes our entertaining of the appeal. And we also have a number of other business items on our agenda. Um, first is new applications. We have none before us this evening. We've got old business. This in essence was old business, which we've covered. Um, my understanding is that there is no other pending old business, but I'm looking to my fellow board members to confirm that. Um, I see some nodding heads, um, folks out in Zoom land, any out, any old business that we need to attend to that I'm forgetting?
No.
Okay, hearing none. We have to take up and review and approve our minutes of our last meeting. Um, we were provided with draft minutes for the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Um, having reviewed them, I think they look fantastic, but I know other folks have more eagle eyes than I do. Any, any recommended revisions to the minutes for my fellow board?
I have one thing I just wanted to double check. Under new applications in the summary, it refers to the Branch Brook Aquifier Zone B. Should that be zone A?
Oh, good eye, good eye. Let me just look. Um, you're absolutely correct. Well spotted.
Thank you.
And there's another one, Mr. Sayers caught as well. Um, it's on page four, under new business, just before the motion in bold, it says, member consequently agreed. It should state members. Um, and is Jim out there?
I just want to make sure. He, he is not. I'm writing them down.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Um, and so with respect to the written decision that we're issuing is my assumption is that Jim usually drafts those up, but Brittany, are you going to be doing that just for that?
I'll ask, I'll ask for clarification tomorrow from Karen. Um, I know Jim is going to be doing the minutes based off this recording, so I'm not sure how we'll handle that tomorrow. It might be me, it might be Jim.
Fair enough. Now, other procedural note, uh, I believe that our rules and perhaps state statute requires a written decision be issued within seven days of the vote. Um, just trying to find that. Let's see. Bear with me if you would.
If, if I'm doing it, it'll be done by the end of the week. Otherwise, everything in my brain will be gone.
Understood. Um, oh, oh, no, but each far more than that. The board shall render a decision on each appeal within thirty days following the public hearing on such appeals. Um, we've already made the decision. It's the issuance of the decision. I think that's statutory. Actually, I don't have it in front of me, but off the top of my head, pulling up thirty-eight, two, six, nine, one, bear with me.
But Leah, before we get into all this, are there any other, um, changes to the minutes? And if not, then do we want to have a vote on those, the minutes, just to kind of close that item up?
Very much appreciate that. I don't believe there are, um, um, Mr. Sayers, anything else on those?
I don't think so.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. Appreciate that. Um, with not, I, I don't believe so. So I'm going to make a motion to approve and accept the minutes as amended. Any second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Barry, and I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Barry?
Agreed.
Um, Mr. Sayers?
Aye.
Mr. Seventy?
Aye.
Brunel?
Yes.
I vote, yeah, wow. Okay, and Mr. Barry has spotted within our own, um, ordinance, articles six, section J does say that the munis, uh, see the planning board, decision shall be mailed and hand delivered to the applicant within seven days of the board's decision. So, um, I'm, you say Brittany, that you will draft up decisions?
I, I, I'll get clarification tomorrow. If I'm supposed to be doing it, it'll be done within that seven day period and mailed out to the applicant.
Also technically, we need to sign it. You can authorize the chair to sign it, but I do believe that we should, um, everyone has an opportunity to review that in a pub and, and, and say so in a public meeting. So, um, I, I think we.
It's required to have a public, another public hearing within seven days?
It's not a hearing. It's not a hearing.
Okay.
Be safe. Here, here's, here's what what, what could have been done and arguably should have been done is that we would have sort of taken our, gone through all of the criteria and voted on them, but not have voted until the next date. Um, well, you have.
We're okay.
All right. But are you author, the chair to, to sign the decisions consistent with our, I think we need a motion in that regard because otherwise we have to meet.
I think once the letter is drafted and it is emailed out to the board. So we can make sure that we'll there are no questions.
Yep.
All right. Then I make a motion to authorize the chair to sign that letter.
Okay, the only concern I have in that regard is I'm being a little punctilious. I understand. Is that, um, you know, if there are concerns and we're talking about them in cyberspace, then that we can't do that. So I think what I would ask is this, is that simply say, I am okay with these findings and that's it. And if you do have a concern, then I think we do need to convene to discuss them publicly. So it, does that work as procedurally, is that they will be circulated? And people will just say, approve, Leah, and I can come in and sign them.
I'm assuming the gist of the letter is just going to be the results of the votes.
Right, the, the seven day notice, uh, that has to be sent. It's not the decision itself. It's just notice of exactly what, uh, the decision in a, in, in very.
Right, but we still do need to have findings of fact, the, the law, the statute requires, the, the ordinance doesn't, but statute requires that in that decision, I mean, we can say if we want to be a notice of decision can out within seven days. And I can, you can authorize me to sign that. But with respect to the findings of fact, which we are legally required to produce in writing as to why we decided that, um, we have to, we have to, why don't we do that? Does that make sense?
That's within thirty days, right?
No, that's our decision, which we've already made. So, um.
So notice that, let me, just because I'm, I'm probably going to be writing this up, notice of decision shall be mailed. So the notice of the decision is that it was denied. That's their application and their request was denied is the notice. And then the decision of the appeal, that has to be done within the thirty day period.
No, we've already made our decision. That's how I interpret it, but, um, the seven days is notice of decision. What we're struggling with here is whether those are the full-fledged findings of fact or if it's just simply a letter to say you're denied and findings to fact, findings of fact will and conclusions to follow. So my suggestion is that you authorize me to sign a notice of decision that says your appeal has been denied. Um, findings in fact, findings and conclusions to follow, which we can then meet in, in public and, and discuss them. Then we can satisfy, I think, the statutory and the ordinance requirements as well as the, the, the requirement that we meet in public to consider findings. Does that make sense?
Agreed.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. So I heard a mo, a motion to allow me to sign the notice of decision, which is simply a reflection of, of our vote and that, um, there will be subsequent findings and conclusions drafted that we will once again assemble, consider and vote at a later date. Actually, while we're here, should we consider, uh, the next date? Um, all board members, can you get out your calendars so that we can, and also I, I, I'm, I know, um, we want to make sure that the room is actually available. And that there aren't.
So, so typically the, you would meet on that, um, third Monday of the month, which would be the September nineteenth. If everybody's available, because the planning board would meet on the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, so the board, the room should be available on the nineteenth.
Sure. I've got, I've got that available that evening. How about everybody else?
Double for Sayers.
Great. How about you?
I'm okay.
Okay, votes, um, Paul and John?
Checking, um, same here. Yeah, it should be fine at six thirty on the nineteenth.
Is that, does that?
Yeah, that typically you guys meet at, or the board meets at six thirty, yes.
Great. Okay.
Where, where's Paul still looking? I haven't had a yes from him yet.
Um, I have something that might roll long. Um, I'm gonna say yes, I can make it and I'll let you know if that changes.
Excellent. Thank you so much, folks. Um, I think that concludes our business.
Just, just for clarification, that meeting will be in person at the town hall. There will be no Zoom function at that time. I don't think they've mastered the hybrid. It'll be at the town hall.
Okay, so we're all clear on that. We will see you on the nineteenth at six thirty PM in the meeting room, um, uh, at six thirty on the nineteenth. Thank you so much. And we'll be draft finding circulated in advance of that meeting.
Uh, yes, hopefully. They'll have to be done because that's what you guys are meeting on. So I'll have something done.
Excellent. Okay. And, and Brittany, I can confer with you or Jim or whoever's doing them about, you know, requirements and what they should look like and all of that.
Yeah, there's probably a template or a previous one done that I can mirror, but I'll probably send it to you just to make sure that's the template that you like.
Great.
Or are expecting, I should say.
I know, that's great. All right, everyone. Thank you so much. I, I will.
Thank you, everybody on the board. Good night.
Good night. So, um, who wants to make the, our favorite motion?
I move that there's no further business and that the meeting should be adjourned.
Second.
And we all seconded. Vote, I know, I think, I know what everybody's vote is going to be, but, um, Mr. Barry?
I vote aye.
Mr. Six.
Aye.
Mr. Seventy?
Aye.
Mr. Brunel?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. So good night, everybody. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, take care.